Thursday, July 10, 2024. Debbie Miller, can you do the roll call?
Carter.
Here.
Ellis.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Ochkin.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Perchinny.
Here.
Fredo.
Here.
Seedorf.
Here.
Swor.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Orr.
Here.
Thank you.
Can we rise for the flag to the ladies? Hi.
The United States of America and to the great body for which it stands on nation under God into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Councilwoman, can we get the rule of emphasis? Is there any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
And a vote? Okay, that's good. So we have public comments. I mean, before we start public comments, I just wanted to acknowledge that we had a cleanup of our homeless camps down in the state in the River Street area and did so as well as we hoped it would have gone. So we're going to plan another meeting, another cleaning next week. And we've met with directors and I think we have a better plan in place for what's going to happen next week. And I think administrator plan will probably collaborate on that later. But I just wanted to let you guys know, we do, we do realize that it did get cleaned up. It looks like there's more stuff out there than there was before we started. So we are going to address it again next year, next week. So with that, I guess we can move into public comments and please limit your comments to three minutes and try and be respectful. Go for it. Try to say your name and your address or your board number, please.
I don't know if that's working or not, but it sounds like it is. I'm Deb Wilson. I'm from Leisure Manor Estates over in South Aberdeen. And we've had a problem with our landlord not wanting us to put an AED at the clubhouse where we're at. And we did a bake sale and raised a bunch of money and bought our own AED. And then we asked them if we could sit it outside in a little nook on their house. I'll be leaving all this paperwork with you. And they said no. And so we ended up putting it at the neighbor's house, on their house, which is across the street and kitty-cornered to the clubhouse. Seconds matter when somebody needs an AED. And we do have pictures of, there's one at the South Bend courthouse. And there's also one at the Legislative Building in Olympia. And there's no reason why they would have any kind of opposition to putting this there. We offered to keep monitoring the battery and take care of the AED and be responsible for it. And they still have said no. Senator Wilson has heard this problem and he has stated to us that he would like to support a statewide law that would say that if we would need an AED in senior mobile home park clubhouses, senior centers, any place where there's a number of people over 55 gathering. So like the Senior Information Center or someplace like that. Where so we're giving you guys a proposal to look over and there's information to contact us. And we would just like to start getting a city ordinance at least that says that we have AEDs in some of these areas. Because we did have a lady had a stroke and a heart attack and it took almost 15 minutes for the fire department to get there. We have some signatures here on our petition and I'll just leave it with Ruth over there and she can work on it with you guys and hopefully we can get it taken care of.
Can you just explain what an AED is?
Oh, it's a defibrillator. For if you have a heart attack, it has patches that you put on and then it tells you if it's time to do a shock for someone. So you're not responsible, you just follow what the directions are that it tells you and it takes care of everything else.
Thank you. All right, next. Is there any question?
I'm Ruth Hamilton with History 98520, Friends of the Aberdeen Museum. And I'm here to lend our support for a yes vote to accepting the state congress funds and Washington Heritage Grant for needed repairs to the 118 West Wishka Building, which we hope will house the future museum. And just think that this is a wonderful opportunity to take advantage of funds that don't require matching to do the needed repairs. And every place has history, but I truly believe that Aberdeen's history is exceptional and it needs to be told. It needs to be preserved for future generations and for visitors and for newcomers. And I just encourage you to do this. Don't just be history, let's make history. Please vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Good evening, council members. Mayor Orr, I'm Jim Niebler. Ward number four. I'm here to do the same thing that Ruth did and that is to recommend that the council ask the mayor to approve the Washington State Commerce Grant Funds for the remodel of 118 West Wishka. I was so excited when the city bought the building with the vision that the museum might once again rise from the ashes and be there. You know, everybody in this room knows that one of the biggest struggles we have in Aberdeen are the vacant buildings in downtown. And how do we, how do we fix that? Well, you've done a wonderful job of working on the homeless issue recently. I know that's a lot of work. This building that we're in right now has been named by the Fenel Nation using a Salish name. And I'm not going to pronounce it because I haven't been taught how to pronounce it properly. But what it means in English is together. And what I see at the Wishka Building is a chance to really come together. And how do we fix downtown? Well, it's got to be one building at a time. And 118 Wishka is a wonderful place where we could have the museum, the visitor's center, the Parks Department. And we have wonderful collaboration with the Genealogy Society. And for them to be with the museum, that's really a great synergy. And right across the street, we have Lee and Danny Bay's wonderful renovation of the Goldberg Building with the big draw that's going to have Nirvana and Kurt Cobain Center. So I think we're really moving in the right direction. I know last council meeting, Jerry Solstrom talked to you about being able to connect youth to the museum and with a sense of history. And I had the pleasure of walking in the parade Founder's Day and I was James Stewart playing the part. And I had two students from Miller Junior High walking next to us and Alicia and Ian. And they were both excited to be in the parade, but they learned all about, because I was able to interact with them. They learned all about how the city of Aberdeen got its name and they were really glad to know that. So just having this kind of interaction with youth and the other, Ruth mentioned how rich Aberdeen history is. We certainly aren't any, we're not Andy Griffiths Mayberry, but it makes it all the more unique and interesting. But one of the things that I really enjoy is the ability to volunteer. And just yesterday, my wife volunteered the bloom team downtown and I was volunteering at the warehouse, working on the museum collection. And just having these kinds of activities and events for seniors, retarded people such as myself, to be able to volunteer. What I really enjoyed in volunteering is meeting other volunteers. Aberdeen is rich with volunteers. We have wonderful people. And working with the city council, having your volunteers, being able to have events that bring people together is wonderful. Thank you very much.
Please, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to council president Morrison.
I'm going to go with my consent agenda.
Second, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the minutes for the last meeting. For the motion by council member Perchinny. In minutes, it states. Discussion, motion by council president Morrison, seconded by council member Perchinny to amend the motion to allow 30-day extension. Still allowing the July 9th camp cleanup to continue. I would like to amend that language to say still allowing a full and proper cleanup to continue.
Right. There's a person second, is there any discussion? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
A vote? Now, approve, is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
No, no.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
A vote? That's recent. We'll move into a presentation. Hopefully the first to the consent of you. Oh, wait, hold on. Okay, sorry. Council's payable.
We just need a vote on the approval of the entire consent agenda.
Just, okay. The second, is there any discussion on? There was already done.
That was just the amended minutes that are in, within the consent agenda. Now we need to approve that consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
A presentation from Director Barnett.
Thank you. Stacy Barnum, Parks Director.
Hey, turn it on first.
How's that?
One minute.
Thank you. So recently, the Parks Department and the Grace Harbor Conservation District have formed a partnership. And they did a project at Kurt Cobain Memorial Park to help stabilize the bank along the river. And they recently wrote a grant and were successful in receiving a grant from the Washington State Conservation Commission to do another project at Stewart's Memorial Park. So we appreciate the work that they do on behalf of the city and it's benefiting the Parks Department. So we appreciate that. And now we have David Marcel here from the Grace Harbor Conservation District and he's going to talk about all of the awesome projects that they have going on in Aberdeen.
Stacy, I wanted to give to Marcel, Executive Director at the Conservation District. And I hope your mic goes just a little bit right there, maybe.
Push it down in.
Oh, there you go. Okay. So for those who heard this, I apologize. I need to tell people who we are and what we do. It's pretty rare that I run into anyone who really knows what a conservation district is. So we're created through RCW 8908, kind of something that came out of the Dust Bowl era, used to be called the Soil Conservation Service. But speaking plainly, we're a non-regulatory government entity, not an agency. And we're 100% grant funded, which basically means we can take any grant dollar from anywhere and apply it to solving any natural resource-based issue with anybody. It's a pretty comfortable RCW that we get to all 300. Right now, we just kicked off this 225 and we have $9.7 million in grants across our five departments. Watershed, marine resiliency, forestry, education outreach, and I'm forgetting with the. And I'm forgetting what the, it's all carried on here. But what that all means is essentially private landowners reach out to us. We do not encroach on lands, we don't follow up with the ecology department like in a regulatory capacity. If someone's shoreline is a real in the land property, we design that with engineers and we solve that with construction methods. People need timber management plans, we ride those in-house and then we implement those BMPs. And over the last four months since opening, doing investment management practices, we've done three hundred and forty-two acres with eleven different landowners in Grace Harbor County. We also do education in schools, such as our salmon and schools program, where we put salmon eggs and fish tanks in local Aberdeen schools. School kids feed them, raise them, and then release those into local streams during field trips. And that's all funded through the district grants. But we're also tackling a great crab issue. We hire two full-time staff, they're in a boat every day out here on the harbor. And this spring, we caught thirty thousand of those, removing those from oyster farmers' beds. They're voracious little buggers, they keep in the oysters, they cut the arms off the edge of this crab. They're kind of an issue for producers in the area. And there's a proclamation through the governor's office declaring that an emergency. So we take as many of those funds for this county as we can through those grant opportunities. A bit about who we are, the ground, we have nineteen MTEs, they're all local in Grace Harbor County. It's kind of ethos in which we operate, local people know the local issues. We have five board supervisors, three are elected and two are appointed. It's a requirement in RCW that three of those five have to be agricultural producers or land managers in the county. So that kind of keeps everything as local as possible. So jumping into the projects we're going to work with, with Parks and Rec, like Stacy mentioned, we have the Memorial Park. We noticed there's been erosion, just doing some assessments. There's a lot of complaints from the landlords upstream of that. In one day, it was Martin Luther King Day, it was like ten degrees out. We planted three thousand willow stakes, essentially cuttings through the bank. That effort is to put roots in the ground and prevent erosion in the long term. So similar to that project, when we went to Stewart's Park, the creek there within the park, it had some signs of erosion, but virtually no woody vegetation along it. So it was an opportunity to go meet with parks and see if we could write a grant to get that funded. So we got that funded, just by a ten thousand dollars through the National Resource Investment Fund and through the commission. That's going to pay our staff to host a volunteer event to get folks just like the Cobain Park out there to plant that up. I'm really excited that the trail there is being refurbished. I personally use that trail and I know how badly it needs it. So we tethered into that grant, putting up some interpretive signage and clusters of various native plants along that trail. Kind of give yourself to do a look at as you're going through that. Educate people on the native tree species, you, by myself, for a claim plant nerd. So it's kind of something I'm looking forward to. In addition to that park though, in our meeting with Stacy, I hope I'm saying it right, it's Alaska Park, right? You come across the bridge. There's some pretty severe erosion going on there too. So we have a pending grant application to do that same treatment right there. Something I've learned working in conservation districts and there's natural resources in general, is when you lose land, you can't just backfill it and gain it again. You need to trust to find any permit agency that's going to allow that. So getting ahead of the problem, putting some trees, some shrubs in there, you know, we can select a planting plan, that's not going to cut off your viewpoint or anything. That's pretty much what we're all about, we're used to with private landowners or open landowners. So we're going to be doing that in the next planting season, which for us is October through February. We plant dormant trees in cold conditions, they come back alive in the spring, that's how that all works. The other thing I wanted to tag on my presentation today. A few months back, we presented on the farmer's market. After reading that it was essentially going away with whole harbor, this thing, if you will. We applied for two grants, one through the National Association of Conservation District for ten thousand dollars to plan how we're going to enhance and adopt that market through the board of the Conservation District. The other one, it was suing the fence, it was through WSDA, the Ag in State. That was for forty-two thousand dollars, which would bring actual infrastructure money as well as some planning money to enhance that. While the NACB grant, the ten thousand dollar one is still pending. We did receive a little word letter on June twenty-eighth, the forty-two thousand dollars to enhance and maintain that market for next year. So it won't be going away. Yeah, Amy told me, she's currently volunteering as the manager there, she puts in a lot of time. She just presented at our board meeting yesterday, giving us the rundown of what we're kind of getting ourselves into. It's a lot of work, but that forty-two thousand bucks should enhance that and bring some real horsepower to the effort to get it going. And I'll just rattle off a few of the deliverables in that grant. Additional infrastructure, marketing materials for both vendors and customers. Reserving facility rentals, that's badly needed. Of course, our staff time to make this all possible. Traffic control fees and travel expenses that we can work with producers to hopefully, you know, improve their bottom line. And one of the sticking points of that market too, I came to learn is every vendor there has to have their own insurance, something a million dollars covering them for liabilities. That prevents anyone who's a small business or, I mean, any business really, it's quite a hurdle. So I've been at meetings all day with our insurance company, trying to find out how we can include those vendors under our umbrella. It seems good so far, I'll leave it at that, it won't be definitive, but yeah, those are just some things we want to bring to the market, maybe a new location we want to work with the city on, we have some ideas. So I'll definitely be writing updates along the way and likely meeting with somebody on that property issue or where to host that market next year. So I appreciate y'all's letter of support, I think it did a lot in that application. And hopefully we get that other ten thousand dollar grant too in the next couple of weeks here and I'll, again, provide an update at the next week. So appreciate all your support.
I just had a question. Sure, has the county contacted you about the erosion at the juvenile facility?
Not yet. They want to, they can go to graceharborCD.org, easy form. We don't, again, we don't go out searching, we only take for guys from the landowners, so if you know someone, send them our way, that's our book of business for sure. Hopefully I mentioned this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other council questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we go on to the mayor's report. Since we were talking about the Miller Junior High, it was saw in the paper the other day that fifty-six sixth and eighth graders had a four-point hole at that school. I just wanted to congratulate them for such an outstanding child. I was kind of also talk about, I was in the next group when I got them, so the three point to the three point nine, but boy, there was like two pages. So they, they had a lot of students in there anyway, congratulations to all those students at Joseph Junior High. And I also wanted to announce that an Aberdeen High School class of twenty-twenty-four resident, but she won the gold medal in residential and commercial appliance technology at Skills USA National Leadership and Skill Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. And her name was Kiara Burns. And I just wanted to congratulate her publicly also for representing our little union legal system class.
That was cool.
Mayor?
Yes, I've got two items I wanted to report. One was we received the mid-year financial report. And I want to thank the staff for putting this together and getting this out to us so soon after the end of June. Just to let everybody know, I spent quite a lot of time yesterday going through page by page, line item by line, and I am highlighting questions and items that I had on where we stand on some accounts in terms of not, either not being where we've, I think we should be or where we budgeted to be mid-year in revenue and where we're way over in terms of expenses. I sent a number of questions out to Ruth and Cindy Mahama yesterday, our financial accounts person. And they were able to, along with some directors, at finance committee meeting tonight, address a lot of the concerns that I raised or questions that I had. So I just want to appreciate, extend my appreciation for their efforts to respond so quickly. I really didn't expect to get an answer by tonight, so I appreciate that. The other item I wanted to bring up for the council tonight was we have a couple of ordinances to consider dealing with the camping ordinances in our municipal code. But there's one part of the municipal code that we have not considered addressing. And I'd like to move, everybody was provided a copy of this section of the AMC, the Aberdeen Municipal Code, chapter twelve point four, one point zero, one zero. This has to do with sitting or lying down on public sidewalks in downtown commercial zones. And I'd like to move that the council direct our city administrator, mayor, and our legal counsel to come back at the next city council meeting with a draft revision to repeal this part of our ordinance and were to make it more consistent with the other ordinances and the laws, especially considering the recent Supreme Court ruling.
All right, then, just second, do we have any discussion, council personnel?
Yeah, didn't we, did we vote on that when we had the meeting? Along with the?
No, what you voted on was public camping. Sit lie law is something completely different. This allows, as you can see in front of you, it allows people to lie down between the hours of eleven PM and six AM. By repealing this, this would allow our police officers to refer to definitions in the camping law. So there would still be enforcement of this. And, but it would, it would just allow us to refer back to it. It would do away with this if you decided to repeal it or to remove parts of it, so.
So council member Seedorf, you're proposing that staff would come back with basically what, what the ramifications would be by striking this or?
No, I'd actually like them to propose a repeal of this section. But reading this, there are certain exceptions that are listed, such as medical emergencies or if a shop owner is having some kind of sidewalk sale and they put out chairs for their customers or something a period of time. I think there are some reasonable exceptions that need to be considered. But as far as just allowing anyone generally just sit or lie on public sidewalks or public streets, I'd expand on any of that. At any time in any part of the city, I would like to see that provision of the ordinance struck and repealed.
So by allowing, I'm sorry, mayor. By allowing for the way that the current ordinance is written with those exceptions, there are some unintended consequences that will come with that if we try to enforce it. Every event could possibly be a medical event. So by repealing the entire thing, that would allow our officers to refer back to the camping law. So if we do have people sleeping with blankets and, you know, things like that, we can refer back to the camping law. Just, just the thought, something to think about as this, as you're thinking on this. And we would bring that back to you, these, these types of, these, these things too at the next meeting.
Maybe it's appropriate for Chief Green to address, if we repealed this in its entirety and someone was sitting or lying down on the sidewalk because they did have a medical emergency, obviously an officer or other personnel, emergency service personnel, they wouldn't be citing them or arresting them or anything, they'd obviously see that they get attention, right?
Yes, sir. So the challenge with the sit lie ordinance that is written now, if it was repealed, then we'd refer back to the definitions in the current camping ordinance. Specifically, you know, we have to have some sort of evidence that somebody was camping. So like camping paraphernalia of some sort, you know, it lists tarps, cots, beds, sleeping bags and such. So if we don't have a sit lie ordinance and they're not meeting that definition of camping, then it would be a camping violation. So kind of for me, when I look at evaluating this for the council to come back and give you some guidance when I saw our turn, you know, is the council, do you want people to be able to sleep at any time between, you know, eleven PM and six AM? That would not count any alcoves that business or property owners want us to enforce trespass notices on, access to doorways, you know, dumpsters and things like that, as it currently stands. So, you know, if the answer is yes, then do you want to keep the penalty the same as it is now? Because currently the penalty for a sit lie violation is a civil infraction, not a criminal misdemeanor. So that means, you know, we cannot make a custodial arrest. If you go to MSRC's website, you'll see that there are numerous cities in the state of Washington that have a sit lie ordinance and language is all very, very identical. But they do vary in their penalties as well. For example, Bellingham has the opportunity to impose, you know, community service on somebody. They'd have to give somebody hours if they were violating this. The city pass would just pass theirs and it makes it a misdemeanor to violate a sit lie ordinance, sit lie ordinance. So even if you're looking for your police officers to be able to make a custodial arrest or something, then we have to amend that or just repeal it, go back to being, or the camping ordinance.
Any other council people or comments?
Sir, if you're concerned about us being able to enforce anything, yes, we would be able to enforce things because we would be referring to the camping ordinance. How about camping?
Well, I'd like to clarify it a little because I just heard the chief, I thought, say that if all they were doing was sitting and lying and they didn't have a sleeping bag or a tent or anything else, then they couldn't cite them or otherwise hold them under the camping ordinance if we had passed one instead of a camping. But they could still sit or lie downtown. Right now, where this ordinance is, between basically eleven PM and six AM, you can sit and lie anywhere, even if you don't have a tent or a sleeping bag or anything else. My intent in my motion in amending or and or repealing this ordinance is that we eliminate the provision that would allow anyone at any time in the city, no matter, not just downtown, but anywhere in the city, to just sit or lie on a sidewalk or in the street. Well, in the street, that's probably going to be a problem anyway, a violation because you're obstructing traffic. But I want to give the opportunity, even if you're not trying to camp, you're just hanging out. I don't know if that falls under anti-loitering statutes that the court has said we can't enforce, but that's my intent.
Sure, and I would just add that, you know, the camping is really kind of a, the term habitation. You know, I think if somebody was taking a nap or they were having a picnic with their children and they fall asleep, you know, I think there's always some spirit of law versus letter law intended, as you mentioned, you know, somebody having a medical emergency or something. And we always have disorderly conduct to fall upon. If somebody was blocking a sidewalk, regardless if this was a camping or a sit lie thing, and they refused to allow pedestrian traffic to go through safely, we still have disorderly conduct as well.
I think the concern for Chief Green and I is the exceptions that are in there. We see that a lot of cities have the exceptions written in there and the potential unintended consequences that come from it.
So I think the purpose of, the intent of my motion was recommended that you get together legal counsel, Chief Green, come up with a recommended change to this ordinance, whether it's a repeal or an amendment or whatever.
Okay.
Here we can certainly call up a couple of options and that way the question.
We also maybe look into what the penalty, as you said, it was a civil infringement. As you mentioned, that other cities do like community service or something.
They also do misdemeanors.
Oh, so maybe that's something we could look into as well.
To increasing the penalties associated with that. Yep.
Thank you.
I think looking into the community service is, is agreeing with me.
I agree. I'd rather see it turned into a way for them to give back rather than make it hard for them.
Is there any more, sir? We have a person, a second, is, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any answers? Thank you. Any other council people, reports? We'll move on. Director, report.
Oh.
Oh, wait, did I miss one?
No, that was good.
I would have put you on next. Okay, go ahead, see if this trainer comments.
Um, thank you. I sent an email to all of you regarding the camp cleanup yesterday. I met with camp leaders or the camp cleanup leads today to discuss what occurred yesterday. We have a very solid plan moving forward. What we have is that the start time next week will be at 9:00 AM. Anything outside of a tent will be removed. If they want to keep it, it must be in their tent unless it is a bike or a tote. We'll leave bikes alone. We do have a list that was not used yesterday. So they have been provided the list of the items that they can keep and what will be discarded. Shopping carts will be removed. Propane tanks, the city will take those and dispose of them safely. If a tent is abandoned, it will be removed. We will trespass those that are camping on, Chief Green is looking to see if the owner of the properties on F Street near the Breakwater Restaurant, if those people have, if they have a trespass form in with the police department, we will be clearing out that area as well. There was no clear definition as far as like which group would have to address homeless yesterday. So code enforcement will be responsible for enforcing the items that can be kept and what should be removed. And then police will be there to keep the peace. That was something that was also stated. It was very hot yesterday and it was, although it was very peaceful, everyone was fine. It was just, you could sense that the people were, they're, they were escalating. And then police will also provide guidance if the, if the situation becomes unsafe. We also plan today for the August 7th is the date for the final cleanup. And so we will send notification and we will get that information out as well. We also made a plan today for post-cleanup. We're anticipating, we, we just made a plan to kind of anticipate what it will look like, what will happen to those at our house by the River Street and State Street camps. So we worked out a plan to kind of, it may become a game or not a game, but it may become this kind of discovering different folks in different areas. And so we've created a plan to kind of address, to address that as well. This also requires an increased patrol of our parks and the different wooded areas that are near the downtown core. So we will be increasing our code enforcement presence and our police presence as well. We've received some emails today on some areas, wooded areas located in residential neighborhoods. So that is a consequence of this, that, that this may potentially happen. Again, staff are very committed to this and are, we have a plan moving forward to ensure that we, the Public Works team, code enforcement and police department are all working together to ensure that we can handle the issues that arise from the removal of the camps. If there is, we, we will also notify people, we'll send out notice on Facebook as well as our website, that if there is a camp discovered on public property, they're to report it to code compliance. I'll get the information out. That includes a phone call or by visiting the website and reporting it online. The last newsletter that went out for May and June has information on how to report different issues that you might have. Private property, if, if you find a homeless camp that needs to be reported on private property because it's creating nuisance, you can call the police station during business hours or you can call after hours, you can call the non-emergency line or you can report it online. If you report it online, it will, it will take one to two days to process and, and get an officer out there. So it may, might be better to, to call it in. And then Public Works will be creating, will be doing most of the cleanups, keeping in mind that we do, summertime is Public Works's busiest time. So they will definitely, you have their commitment to, to do their best to kind of clean up the area, different areas that are discovered. So are there any questions regarding what I reported?
Yes, I have a quick, oh, can you hear me?
No.
Yes, yeah.
I don't think it's work.
Okay, push it again. You can push the, till it turns red.
It's red. I can tell. Oh, yeah, push it, push this.
Right here, the mic.
Yeah.
Okay, is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, so there was some concern about certain businesses downtown allowing people to camp around their building, in their alleyway, in their parking area, after we have done this, you know, no, no camping ban. So how can we address that?
If it's on private property?
Well, you know, I mean, you know, they're, they're renting the space downtown, the building, they have a parking lot next to their building and they're saying, yeah, you, you can camp in there.
And that will have to be handled through public, or excuse me, through code enforcement. So I'll talk with Director Scott about this one.
Okay, that'd be great.
If you can let me know where, we can talk.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank you.
That law in the residential, was part of, it was considered that the property behind parents' furniture?
Yeah, so that was reported to me today. So I think what we're seeing is it, it, some, we are seeing some camps popping up in residential areas. So that was reported today.
That would be private property.
That's the city's property. So we will, oh, yes.
There would be a part of it that's going to be private property. If you raise the piece of it on to be on private property as well, yeah. For what she did, uh, to know about, like, the years with the Eden Road to the left of the road, that's frequently broken into and people are caught in.
That's the exact, so we have a lot, Lisa, excuse me, Director Lisa Scott will be sending out notice to all vacant building owners downtown to let them know what the cleanup that will be happening next month. And for them to be vigilant, we'll be working with, we'll send notice out to downtown Aberdeen Association as well to work with all the businesses. So, yeah, there, and for vacant properties, just like that, we would, I would love to, we would love more information on that so that we can log that so our code enforcement folks can get ahold of the property owners, take care of that. Thank you.
Well, just a comment, I want to thank Public Works again, all the work that they did down there yesterday. Thankless work, well, their job description. I, it was really disheartening down there yesterday and I was really disappointed. Obviously, I'm sure everybody's heard about by now. And I appreciate the letter that you sent out to the council yesterday and I appreciate everything that you've highlighted here. But in that letter, I, you know, I felt like I heard a lot about miscommunication and it kind of left me feeling like everything was getting, getting up in Public Works and I don't think that that was fair. Everybody that I talked to down there was ready to stay all day and do the work and get it all done appropriately, the way that the council had spelled out. You know, while you've outlined everything that is going to come in the next month and it sounds great and, and I'm ready to work with you guys, I think we all learned to accomplish what needs done. I just want to remind you guys, the staff's with you guys, you know, the staff, they're going to do what you direct them to do. And I just didn't think that was appropriate. I don't know if that was what was intended in your email, but that's how it came across to me. It was tough down there yesterday. I'm sure Chief can attest to that. I'm sure that all the Public Works crews can attest to that. It was heightened emotions down there for sure yesterday. Like you said, it was hot. And it's sad, it was worse down there today than it did when it started. And that's been a consistent theme for every single cleanup that we've had down there, so. I look forward to seeing what, what is accomplished. This, this is a good start that you've outlined and I appreciate some, that's all.
Any other council folks with that? Good question.
Um, Director.
Okay. Anything else for you?
Nope, I've been any other directors. Rebecca, you ready?
I'm ready. I have any directors now?
Since I failed to figure out how to run a PowerPoint the last two meetings, I'm going to turn it over the hand, the controls to Becca. Who, not that one. When I emailed you today.
Other communication? Well, the ones we didn't get to see last time, but they look good.
Let me try to share my screen. You have to give me, with me over, so I'm the presenter. So on the agenda tonight, we have the request for council approval to accept about $2.2 million from Washington State Department of Commerce. And those funds will be used for the improvements to 118 West Wishka Street. So I wanted to give you some background information and information on how those funds would be used and, and why we hope that you support that. 118 West Wishka is a three-story building. It's 27,000 square feet. So each floor is about 9,000 square feet. The request for using the funds will be for the remodel of the first floor only. So our goals for tonight's meeting is to provide the vision for 118 West Wishka and how it will be used as a visitor's information center, a city office space and for museum purposes, which would be both a public museum and storage of museum artifacts. To provide you the construction cost estimates and the funding sources to pay for the remodel and hopefully enlist the city council's help in preserving and sharing Aberdeen's rich history. So the vision for the museum and the visitor information center, it will be more visible due to the location. The former museum was located on Third Street and this location is right in the center of historic downtown Aberdeen. There will be a stronger emphasis on education and youth involvement. We can then interpret our history through a more modern lens and be interactive. We can reconnect with our heritage through music, arts, indigenous peoples, science industry and local culture and provide information for tourists visiting our city. Goals for the museum, this is our museum. It can help revitalize our downtown. It can give tourists another reason to stop. It will promote our history, our art and music. It's crucial for our children's education and heritage. It provides a place for individuals to donate items to preserve our history and it helps to reestablish trust with our community. The total cost estimate for the remodel is just a little over $2.3 million. This includes a new roof, new windows on the third floor and then all necessary improvements to the first floor so that we can open the building for use as a museum for storage for museum artifacts, our department office space and a visitor information center. The funding sources to pay for the building remodel, this can be completed in phases. Ruth and I met with Washington State Commerce and they authorized the use of the funds for the first floor only to allow us to complete the full remodel of the building in three phases. So the first phase, which is what we're bringing to you on the agenda tonight, is for the first floor only. That would be paid for by the Washington State Commerce Funding and Capital Heritage Grant. We would begin work this fall and I anticipate completion by summer of 2026. The Washington State Commerce Funding requires that you complete and spend all the funding by June of 2025. There is an opportunity to request an extension through 2027 and Ruth has already started a conversation with Commerce about the extension. Phase two could be the remodel of the second floor only. We have met with the Friends of the Aberdeen Museum and talked to them about them taking the lead on fundraising for the construction cost estimates of a total cost of about $4 million for the second floor. And then phase three could be the remodel of the third floor and that would be the final phase of the remodel of the building. Again, we've talked with the Friends about utilizing their efforts for the fundraising for the construction costs for the third floor and I estimate that at about $6 million. Needs for the building and the museum. Once the first floor is remodeled and completed and ready for use, we can move the artifacts out of the museum warehouse. We're currently spending about $6,000 a month to lease that space along with any utilities and other costs associated with leasing that building. The Parks Department can move out of the space that we're in right now. We pay about $1,200 a month for the space that we're in and we could move into that building as well. And the Parks Department would assist with operations of the visitor information center. Some other options for operations of the museum and then also to support the operations of the visitor information center is that we contract with the nonprofit. When the museum was operating at the Armory, the city had a contract with the Friends of the Aberdeen Museum for operations of the museum on behalf of the city. We provided the building and they made sure that the building, or the museum was open. We can also look at transferring ownership of the collection to a local nonprofit with experience in museum operations. I hope that that information was helpful in helping you guys to make a good decision tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one and I don't want to be cool and everything. That's just genuinely curious. So you said the Friends would help fundraising efforts collectively to the tune of about $10 million. Is that realistic? Is that achievable?
They have access to funding that the city is not available to apply for because they are a nonprofit agency and there are large dollars available.
And if, if they fall short, does that come to us to pay for?
At that time, you probably wouldn't start any type of remodel until funding had been secured. And if a nonprofit was unable to raise those funds, then yes, it would probably be on the city to raise the funds needed to complete phase two and phase three.
Okay, thank you.
If, if the city chose to do that?
We understand, we are, I understand it's our obligation to complete it though, correct? The agreement, you know, to do first floor, do we have, do we have to do second and third in order to, you know, satisfy that?
Okay. No, no, we were, we were able to get them to agree to just allow us to use the funding that's available to us right now to, for just the first floor.
Okay, so we get a wall, then, okay, that's good to know.
Sometimes with legislative funding, they do like to see projects to completion. So this might be motivating for them to approve, you know, more allocations again towards this. There's also community fund facility money there through Commerce as well. But we have an agreement, you know, in speaking with the Friends, that this understanding that they would seek funding through donors. There is a lot of affluent families with historic names in Aberdeen that might be interested in sponsoring a wing of the museum or, you know, so that's, that's the hope, is that they would seek out private donations.
I have some comments, but I'm going to save them for our financial report section on the grants.
All right, thank you.
Hold on.
Director Barnum, I'd like to, to see us create a, a contract with Friends of the Museum to take over both the collection and the operation of the museum. It's something that has been juggled for years and years. Friends of the Museum certainly demonstrated their capability in how to manage a museum and the collection. And, and the city essentially isn't set up to do that. So as we move forward, I would like to have, to have that discussion started with the idea of having a contract that comes back to council for review.
I agree that having a contract with a nonprofit I agree that having a contract with a nonprofit is the best way to operate a museum. But the city, as a government agency, should send out a request for proposals and make the opportunity available to all nonprofits and not select one without giving everyone the opportunity.
Are you angry about it?
Okay. And I heard correctly that this for the first floor, we're also able to add a new roof to this?
Correct.
Perfect.
Yeah, we're doing a lot of the major work that needed to be done. We included that in the scope of work. There requires repairs to the elevator, repair, replace, window replacements, a new roof, so more of the heavier lifting and new things, yeah.
Do you remember how much we paid for that property?
$350,000.
Hand it up.
No other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to give a council and mayor a quick update. Yesterday, we had our annual audit with the city's insurance risk pool, Washington City's Insurance Authority, and this year's focus was on personnel policies, procedures, and training, and I'm happy to report that we're in full compliance. There's no mandatory findings or changes that we have to make, so that's great news. You have to know.
That's correct.
I can't.
Just had to really get down with the flowers.
Now we're going to move to a place for council action, Finance Department. And council, we have four reports. First reported, a request from Finance recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Excel Tech to provide structural analysis of the Armory Annex. I move to accept this request.
Second.
To the executive to accept, to enter into agreement with Excel Tech. Yeah, to provide structural analysis for the Armory Annex. We have a first and second. Is there any discussion?
With your comments. We asked Chief Green to sit in on our Finance Committee meeting today. We posed a lot of questions to him about the need for the use of the Armory Annex for its intended purposes, that they, that they're intending to use it for, the condition of the overall building, whether structural analysis was really needed, et cetera, et cetera. And basically answered all the questions. First, that's second. First, Finance Committee recommended that the council approve this. But this is just kind of the first step. Once the structural analysis is completed, if the council proceeds with it, then they're going to come back and say, okay, is the building usable, or are we going to have to spend a lot more money to make it usable for the intended purpose? And also just to clarify, the, it was already $20,000 allocated in this year's budget. This is going to add about another, what, $6700 or $6800 or so above that because the big king is a little higher than the $12,000 budget. So it's not a request for the full $27,000, it's just about $7,000 more. Okay, any other discussion?
I have, I have another question. So here's the Armory Annex. I know that Armory.
Right next to, right under the old museum.
Second, and I started.
So the Armory, so the Armory burnt down.
Yeah, the brick building.
It lies across the street of Little Brick Building, and that was the Armory Annex.
Yeah.
But no, okay.
There's the old food bank where they moved.
The old food bank, okay. Isn't that building built in like 1928 or whatever?
Bold.
What is the current condition of that building?
Not.
It's like, you know, layman's terms, like, is it really in poor shape, or what are we looking at? What are we getting ourselves into?
Well, it's kind of our goal is to find outside, we don't have the money to rehab it should that be necessary, but that's, that's why we need to venture to come and take a look at Steve's stuff, and whether you keep all the bricks in the envelope and then just do some sort of steel beams or something, or some sort of paneling around the building. But, you know, our goal is to just get a study done so we can have an idea, because it's, you know, it's an old building, but certainly very useful, it's pretty big, it's close proximity to our station, quite beneficial to get silverware vehicles that need to be secured out of the elements.
And early this year, Commerce sent information on funding available through USDA, so I submitted a request for $850,000 for that building.
Okay. And by having this analysis done, we'll be able to apply for more grant funding to convert it, you know, to, we're looking at, we've looked at FEMA dollars and things like that, so we're looking to apply more grants to renovate or remodel.
Any other discussion? All in favor? opposed? Passes.
Okay. We have, the next two requests, B and C, are pertaining to grant funding for the 118 West Wishka Street building for the museum and all. And unless there's objections from the council, like last time, I'd like to aggregate these two together in one motion for approving. And just briefly, is there a request from Finance recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign agreement S1801A with the Washington State Department of Commerce and accept the grant funding of $1.7 million to be used for the remodel of 118 West Wishka Street? And a request from Finance recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign agreement S20084 with the Washington State Department of Commerce and accept the grant funding of $490,000 to be used for the remodel of 118 West Wishka? And I so move to accept both of these requests.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to allow the mayor to sign agreements S1801A and S20084. Is there any discussion?
I'm just going to throw out a comment based on Director Barnum threw out some really good information, which is helpful to have. I'm not certain what the basis of all of the cost estimates are, but that's a lot of money, and I certainly hope that grant monies and other funds can be made available so that eventually the entire building, all three floors, can be remodeled, renovated, secured, and be a, a good asset for our community. But in all that regard, looking at the numbers, the city really does need to do a better job when it looks at properties, that it thinks it wants to acquire for any particular use, to really consider what is it going to cost to do what we want to do, and how much are we paying for it in the first place? When I added up all the numbers and we got, you know, pushing, if those numbers are anywhere near accurate, it's almost $13 million for a $27,000 worth of building. I'm sorry, I'm a commercial real estate appraiser, and that's just ridiculous. I mean, you could build a really, really nice new building for a lot less money than that, and so we just need to be a little more thoughtful. I'm not too concerned about it at this point because we are looking at this as grant funding. We're not talking about spending money out of the general fund. If we were, I'd have some issues with it, but as long as we're getting grant monies, let's keep pushing on that, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you. Okay. And then under the last request, I have B as a request, huh? It's a request from Finance recommending the city council deaccess the Malinowski pile, catalog number 84.036.002, in the city's museum collection, and return it to the state of Emily J. Earhart. I so move that we accept this request.
Second.
First and second, is there any discussion? Right, all in favor of B accession of the Melo, Malinowski, sorry, pile, catalog number The I.
I.
Opposed? Passes. If there's already anybody who moves on, I just wanted to also say that, I'm going to mess up the name again, the Malina, Malinowskis, sorry. Malinowskis. So they're the family that gave us the water rights for the, when you cheat down the, the city homes, and they're having a, a family reunion up there. Is that this weekend or next weekend?
First of August.
First of August coming up anyway. Because it's amazing that their family thought about our city enough to give us that property for that anyway. I just thought I'd acknowledge that. All right, now we're going to Public Safety Chairperson Hodgkins.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go over the stats for the, for the last few weeks. This is for the public safety, for the fire department. They had in June 488 incidents, and it's up about 2.1% from last year. Not a whole lot. And then homeless response data, total responses 57, a year-to-date is 370. And overdose, overdose report is 18 incidents in the month of June. For the July, there were no firework reported related incidents in Aberdeen, so nobody got hurt, which is good. Nobody tried to burn their house down with their fireworks that are past their Aberdeen town. That's good news. So Emergency Preparatives Expo is going to be on Saturday, July 20th, from 10:00 to 2:00. It's going to be in the Gateway Plaza, which is where the Tractor Supply is, so you want to go to that because you're going to learn a lot about being prepared for emergencies. And then there, and just to make it a little funder, there's going to be prizes and giveaways. So come learn how to be prepared for emergencies we might have. And there's going to be a burn ban that's going to take effective on Friday, July 12th, so it's this Friday, at 12:01 a.m. No, no burns, so we're going to burn ban, and that's going to include the entire city, correct?
Gee.
Okay. Okay. And then for the police department, we've got some council agenda items that I'll read off properly this term. I'm going to actually try and do that, keep it simple. So, but just for information's sake, activity report, they've had 18,841 so far this year, and they responded to 77 calls for service around the River and State Streets in June, so 77 calls to the River and State Street camp. And our VIPs have secured funding and purchased an additional 600 lock boxes for deployment around the county. They've installed 115 in Aberdeen and 20 in Hopeway in the Colmopolis. These lock boxes allow for emergency access for public safety agencies for those with mobility and medical issues. So that's the agenda items. And then we've got some council items that we're going to do. So we have a request from Public Safety recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the inner local agreement with the city of Longasino for the temporary boarding and seizing of impounded animals. They don't have their own animal control, so we're going to help them with that. She told me that it'd be about 10 to 12 animals a year possibly, and I move that we accept this request.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Are they going to be?
Yes, they are.
They will.
Yeah, they will be.
Chief Green has done a very good, excuse me, Chief Green has done a very good job of finding revenue sources for the, for the police departments.
Thanks, sir.
Second ordinance, oh, sorry.
Any other discussion? Yeah.
Will this be contingent on available space?
Absolutely. More discussion? Seen that? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Any carries?
Second ordinance, first reading of bill 24-03, an ordinance amending the AMC 12-46, removing sections of AMC 12-46 are .46.030, amending AMC 12.46.040, and repealing AMC I mean, I move that we approve this ordinance.
Okay, so this is for the first reading.
Yes.
Any discussion on it? No? All in favor?
I.
First reading.
So second, first reading of bill 2404, an ordinance repealing AMC 10, that, period 20, period 100, removing the section in AMC section 10 regarding camping and vehicles. I move that we approve this ordinance.
Second.
And second, is there any discussion on this? All right, all in favor of the first reading? Opposed? All right, now we'll move on to Public Works with Chairperson Mark.
Thank you. I have one report saving. Request from Public, request from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to execute work order eight with MFA Inc. to provide construction support for the Fry Creek Restoration Project. I move that we adopt this report.
Second.
And then, motion moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute work order eight with Ball and Foster and Alagie Corporated to provide construction supports for the Fry Creek Restoration Project. Is there any discussion? Seen that? All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
That's all from Public Works. Thank you.
All right, now we'll go back to public comments, and please limit your comments to three minutes and be respectful if you can, and best state your name and your warrant number please.
April O'Leary. And I wanted to give the praise to Park and Rec and to the police department. Bull is out. We've been having vandalism all over by our park, and the police department is up to like that. We all have drones now, and you don't need me running to the park and, and getting license plate and taking pictures and doing what I do. And so the police department has been doing great. Park and Rec also has been doing great because when you get kids out of school and they're doing vandalism, taking over quarter potties, shooting whatever pellet guns with meat on bathrooms, Park and Rec is there the next day cleaning that up. There is an Airbnb right next to me, which is a view of the park. So we've been getting praise for the park from the people at the Airbnb. The Airbnb is recently opened. They're brand new. They've been there less than a year, and it's been nonstop with renters, and we've had people that were doctors and Dr. Seattle and Portland and all this, and they praise the park. The park looks beautiful. The playground looks beautiful.
What park did they?
It's that bit. So I wanted to give praise to the park because the kids during the summer, I run over there, I give them waters and coffins and juice and stuff, and the police department are used to me going in with my pajamas and saying, I got license plate, I got ID. So the police department and Park and Rec can thumbs up.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Gail Anderson from New York. I just wanted to, I have to laugh, but at the meeting on July 3rd, a gentleman was complaining that he had no money and, and that he needed to pay a ticket, and so I went and approached him. I knew him from the mall, and I offered him a job to work the next day to help him set up. He said, yes, and then he never showed up. It's just fun, but anyway, I am a bit worried about, this camp is just, this band, it will, I'm having so much trouble with the homeless moving up around my building. Is there any way to stop them from doing that? I have a tent that was pitched this afternoon, and it's tied to my fire escape. And do I have a right to untie it and move it? Yeah, so I don't know. And one, oh, also a shout out to the police department and to Officer Paul, who helped me on call yesterday from a shoplifter to get my merchandise back.
Thank you.
Yes. Steve Haywood, Ward 4. This pertains to Ward 4. Also, speeding on Sixth Street, going back up again. Remember last year, I think the top speed was 76 miles an hour? It is now 94 miles an hour. And everybody that's speeding is going over, well over 40 miles an hour. We have about 80 mile an hour, 85 mile. We have about eighty mile an hour, eighty-five miles an hour. It's it's a lot crazier. It's quiet. They must have got mufflers on their rigs, but they are speeding. I had a tree removed and I had them parked on the road. He was out putting brush into the brush hog and standing by the truck and those cars weren't even slowing down and there's barely room for just one car to go by there. Just flying. It is absolutely crazy. That sign, I think they're using it to see how fast they're going to go by to look at it. Just that I tell you that we need more police presence up there if we can get more police officers. It is it's out of control. We've got little kids walking back and forth now that school's out. There's not that many kids. Elderly people are walking and we have baby deer now and they just cross the street. They don't look both ways. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Trace Anderson. I'm Ward Four. Stan, I think you're aware of the problem as far as police. There's so much speeding racing up and down Sundar and Simpson all the time. We know we've had many accidents there and they absolutely fly by. Just like Sixth Street and there's accidents. I mean, you know, look, just the same same issue, but it's going on like forever, seems like. But it's very dangerous. Yeah, nobody evades the speed limit. You are going the speed limit, you know, like I tried to, they are on your tail. Anything we can do as far as, I don't know, a speed bump scam or something?
With that, you would get after work safety along, yeah? Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add something for the good of the work. About me. Yes, Miss Anderson, you absolutely can do that from your ladder. I think that officer was dispatched there today, so that didn't work out, I don't know how that goes for you. And then ma'am, about speeding stuff, you know, we've doubled our traffic stops this year. I think we're going to be on base for something like ten thousand tickets so our cops are helping all the time. It's just, you know, right now they're working in their handle calls and their downtime. They're absolutely tasked with working traffic, so it's private for us. And then lastly, with the emergency management exit coming up next Saturday, I'll be in the dump take at ten o'clock. I'm sure there's a few people here that like to throw some page down. So please come on down and I'll make you definitely issue one.
Where's that gonna be against? Try to swipe markers. Do we issue spike restrictions? Is there anything else?
Chief, what'd you say? How many officers are dedicated to traffic? We have one officer dedicated to traffic. We have one area officer who primarily handles DUIs and then the rest of our patrol division all handles the rest of the traffic stops. So they work like thirty-four traffic stops for the year, which is seventeen out of reserve number last year. So we've doubled our traffic enforcement a year.
Councilor Nelson, do you have something?
Lisa Scott's not here, so I'm going to take the opportunity to just remind the public and my fellow council members that we have a we are revising our city code and we've been given a lot of material to look over. Comprehensive plan and the proposed code changes are all available for review on the Canadian Development website. And I went through and made up a spreadsheet of concerns I had and comments, sent those to Director Scott, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same. She's extended invitations to all of us to stop by, talk about things, take advantage of that opportunity. If you'd like to contact me to talk about concerns, I've been involved in the entire process and would be more than happy to meet with you. So that's that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, without other comments, I have a question for Chief Green. Is there any reason why we couldn't put speed bumps on Sixth?
That's really a question for Public Works, honestly, in the insurance department. I don't know. I don't know.
You know, when I first found, I came out to them, they did a, I don't remember what it was, some kind of insurance person. There's actually quite a lot that goes into putting in like even just a stop sign or a speed bump or anything, lots of studies and considerations that they have to do. It's ridiculous. It's very ridiculous. It should be just that, so don't put a stop sign or a speed bump up, but it's not.
I mean, I I knew there, you know, Mr. Haywood has complained about speeding on Sixth quite often for a long period of time, and I know that there were some speeders, but I assume they were going like that, forty or maybe forty-five or something. People going ninety or eighty on Sixth, that's ridiculous. That is absolutely extremely dangerous and a real problem. And that sort of shoots, yeah. Now they had a speed bump and that has to be their priority.
I did live on by Sixth, is what they call it, and they call it that for a reason. So Interstate Sixth, you know, they just had very few stop signs and people didn't want to take off there. So, yes, I think we need to support that somehow with more than just maybe a you're driving too fast line, you know, you know, be those would be nice. So on that, the speed science and everything, I expect to have some of those good Boone Street and Harding and Southus front are particularly bad.
Sure, we're waiting for a battery to show up. So it came, it comes to one battery and we found that we weren't getting enough sunlight in Southside, so I don't. So as soon as we get that battery, the street department's going to put in for it. So, you know, I'll talk to Director Sanger about some, use some alternatives. I think as much as some people may hate more stop signs, that certainly has helped down in the West End and the flat area. Anything to consult people on, that's a good thing.
Thank you. One other, oh, sorry, one other question. I've had a lot of people asking about an update for the elevators, if we have anything. I know where it's lying here.
The estimate given was June of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. Just, oh, traffic issue too. I mean, why can't we get cameras up or cameras that they want to take us? Yeah, one issue, we've looked at this before and it's probably been, I don't know, ten years or so. I don't know if anybody in the council will say that at the time, but the challenge with a like a red light camera or a speed camera is there, it's usually a private company that does that and they get the vast majority of the money. So, because it's a similar fraction, so it's not like the police department's issuing that a fraction of it. It's something to do with the company. So I can reach out again and see if that's an option, but.
Aren't a lot of places kind of moving away from those red light cameras though?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any grace, there's none in grace part of the venue, but they were looking to in downtown because I think they thought it was going to be quite profitable until they tell them to cover the stop sign or stop lines or reds and C points. That's something to help that.
I'm not sure if it matters who's getting the money from it, as long as it's some method to try to get people to slow down.
Sure.
And if they know there's a consequence, maybe they will.
Perhaps, and I think that the argument at the time was this was just some money grab from the city to try to make revenue, so.
Yeah, that goes. Yeah, I think it's worth it though. I mean, what are we going to do if a kid gets ran over, like, you know, we don't always have one, so.
And, you know, all of us know that you drive slow and cozy, right? You know, and that's because they'll give you a chicken if you're two miles over there.
Well, if I cover cozy, six times another time, I'll spend.
It's all the best, yeah. You know, but yeah, we might even hang out a little bit on Sixth Street, you know, maybe kiss and chickens.
Did you know when last place being put in a speed bumps was that, wasn't that the high school, because the last time I was here, I believe they had issued, you know, some kind of legality. So I heard of it. If we go to work and look for some water in the middle of the street. Keep your water in the middle of the road. Angle is good, then we speak on some water.
If somebody's going too fast, it starts to look.
So now I guess we're moving to the executive session.
Okay, we're going to move into executive session for fifteen minutes for R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero, section C, considers dissection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such considerations would cause a likelihood of increased price, and C to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or leased when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price. However, final action selling or leasing public property shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. I'm moving to executive session.
All in paper? Are you going down?
Yes.
All right. Now we'll go back to public comments and please limit your comments to three minutes and be respectful if you can and best state your name and your work number please.
April O'Leary. And I wanted to give the praise to Park and Rec and to the police department. The park is out. We've been having bad vandalism over by our park and the police department is something like that. We all have drones now and you don't need me running to the park and and getting license plate and taking pictures and doing what I do. And so the police department is doing great. Park and Rec also have been doing great because when you get kids out of school and they're doing vandalism, taking over quarter potties, shooting whatever pellet guns with meat on bathrooms, Park and Rec is there the next day cleaning that up. There is an Airbnb right next to me, which is a view of the park. So we've been getting praise for the park from the people at the Airbnb. The Airbnb is recently opened. They're brand new. They've been there less than a year and it's been nonstop with renters and we've had people that were doctors and Dr. Seattle in Portland and all this, and they praise the park. The park looks beautiful. The playground looks beautiful.
What park did they?
I said that. So I wanted to give praise to the park because the kids during the summer, I run over there, I give them waters and coffins and juice and stuff. And the police department are used to me going in my pajamas and saying, I got license plate, I got ID. So the police department and Park and Rec can thumbs up.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Gail Anderson from New York. I just wanted to, I have to laugh, at the meeting on July third, a gentleman was complaining that he had no money and and that he needed to pay a ticket. And so I went and approached him. I knew him from the mall and I offered him a job to work the next day to help him set up. He said yes, and then he never showed up. It's just fun. But anyway, I am a bit worried about, this camp is just banned. Will, I'm having so much trouble with the homeless moving up around my building. Is there any way to stop them from doing that? I have a tent that was pitched this afternoon and it's tied to my fire escape. And do I have a right to untie it and move it? Yeah, so I don't know. And one, oh, also a shout out to the police department and to Officer Paul, who helped me on call yesterday from a shoplifter to get my merchandise back.
Thank you.
Steve Haywood, Ward Four. This pertains to Ward Four. Also, speeding on Sixth Street going back up again. Remember last year, I think the top speed was seventy-six miles an hour. It is now ninety-four miles an hour. Everybody that's speeding is going well over forty miles an hour. We have about eighty mile an hour, eighty-five miles an hour. It's it's a lot crazier. It's quiet. They must have got mufflers on their rigs, but they are speeding. I had a tree removed and I had them parked on the road. He was out putting brush into the brush hog and standing by the truck and those cars weren't even slowing down and there's barely room for just one car to go by there. Just flying. It is absolutely crazy. That sign, I think they're using it to see how fast they're going to go by to look at it. Just that I tell you that we need more police presence up there if we can get more police officers. It is it's out of control. We've got little kids walking back and forth now that school's out. There's not that many kids. Elderly people are walking and we have baby deer now and they just cross the street. They don't look both ways. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Trace Anderson. I'm Ward Four. Stan, I think you're aware of the problem as far as police. There's so much speeding racing up and down Sundar and Simpson all the time. We know we've had many accidents there and they absolutely fly by. Just like Sixth Street and there's accidents. I mean, you know, look, just the same same issue, but it's going on like forever, seems like. But it's very dangerous. Yeah, nobody evades the speed limit. You are going the speed limit, you know, like I tried to, they are on your tail. Anything we can do as far as, I don't know, a speed bump scam or something?
With that, you would get after work safety along, yeah? Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add something for the good of the work. About me. Yes, Miss Anderson, you absolutely can do that from your ladder. I think that officer was dispatched there today, so that didn't work out, I don't know how that goes for you. And then ma'am, about speeding stuff, you know, we've doubled our traffic stops this year. I think we're going to be on base for something like ten thousand tickets so our cops are helping all the time. It's just, you know, right now they're working in their handle calls and their downtime. They're absolutely tasked with working traffic, so it's private for us. And then lastly, with the emergency management exit coming up next Saturday, I'll be in the dump take at ten o'clock. I'm sure there's a few people here that like to throw some page down. So please come on down and I'll make you definitely issue one. I'm just waiting.
Where's that gonna be against? Try to swipe markers. Do we issue spike restrictions? Is there anything else?
Chief, what'd you say? How many officers are dedicated to traffic? We have one officer dedicated to traffic. We have one area officer who primarily handles DUIs and then the rest of our patrol division all handles the rest of the traffic stops. So they work like thirty-four traffic stops for the year, which is seventeen out of reserve number last year. So we've doubled our traffic enforcement a year.
Councilor Nelson, do you have something?
Yeah. Lisa Scott's not here, so I'm going to take the opportunity to just remind the public and my fellow council members that we have a we are revising our city code and we've been given a lot of material to look over. Comprehensive plan and the proposed code changes are all available for review on the Canadian Development website. And I went through and made up a spreadsheet of concerns I had and comments, sent those to Director Scott, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same. She's extended invitations to all of us to stop by, talk about things, take advantage of that opportunity. If you'd like to contact me to talk about concerns, I've been involved in the entire process and would be more than happy to meet with you. So that's that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, without other comments, I have a question for Chief Green. Is there any reason why we couldn't put speed bumps on Sixth?
That's really a question for Public Works, honestly, in the insurance department. I don't know. I don't know.
You know, when I first found, I came out to them, they did a, I don't remember what it was, some kind of insurance person. There's actually quite a lot that goes into putting in like even just a stop sign or a speed bump or anything, lots of studies and considerations that they have to do. It's ridiculous. It's very ridiculous. It should be just that, so don't put a stop sign or a speed bump up, but it's not.
I mean, I I knew there, you know, Mr. Haywood has complained about speeding on Sixth quite often for a long period of time, and I know that there were some speeders, but I assume they were going like that, forty or maybe forty-five or something. People going ninety or eighty on Sixth, that's ridiculous. That is absolutely extremely dangerous and a real problem. And that sort of shoots, yeah. Now they had a speed bump and that has to be their priority.
I did live on by Sixth, is what they call it, and they call it that for a reason. So Interstate Sixth, you know, they just had very few stop signs and people didn't want to take off there. So, yes, I think we need to support that somehow with more than just maybe a you're driving too fast line, you know, you know, be those would be nice. So on that, the speed signs and everything, I expect to have some of those good Boone Street and Harding and Southus front are particularly bad.
Sure, we're waiting for a battery to show up. So it came, it comes to one battery and we found that we weren't getting enough sunlight in Southside, so I don't. So as soon as we get that battery, the street department's going to put in for it. So, you know, I'll talk to Director Sanger about some, use some alternatives. I think as much as some people may hate more stop signs, that certainly has helped down in the West End and the flat area. Anything to consult people on, that's a good thing.
Thank you. One other, oh, sorry, one other question. I've had a lot of people asking about an update for the elevators, if we have anything. I know where it's lying here.
The estimate given was June of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Just, oh, traffic issue too. I mean, why can't we get cameras up or cameras that they want to take us?
Yeah, one issue, we've looked at this before and it's probably been, I don't know, ten years or so. I don't know if anybody in the council will say that at the time, but the challenge with a like a red light camera or a speed camera is there, it's usually a private company that does that and they get the vast majority of the money. So, because it's a similar fraction, so it's not like the police department's issuing that a fraction of it. It's something to do with the company. So I can reach out again and see if that's an option, but.
Aren't a lot of places kind of moving away from those red light cameras though?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any grace, there's none in grace part of the venue, but they were looking to in downtown because I think they thought it was going to be quite profitable until they tell them to cover the stop sign or stop lines or reds and C points. That's something to help that.
I'm not sure if it matters who's getting the money from it, as long as it's some method to try to get people to slow down.
Sure.
And if they know there's a consequence, maybe they will.
Perhaps, and I think that the argument at the time was this was just some money grab from the city to try to make revenue, so.
Yeah, that goes. Yeah, I think it's worth it though. I mean, what are we going to do if a kid gets ran over, like, you know, we don't always have one, so.
And, you know, all of us know that you drive slow and cozy, right? You know, and that's because they'll give you a chicken if you're two miles over there.
Well, if I cover cozy, six times another time, I'll spend.
It's all the best, yeah. You know, but yeah, we might even hang out a little bit on Sixth Street, you know, maybe kiss and chickens.
Did you know when last place being put in a speed bumps was that, wasn't that the high school, because the last time I was here, I think that's speed bumps. I believe that issue, you know, some kind of legality. So I heard of it. If we go to work and look for some water in the middle of the street.
I'd like to motion to, alone, come out of executive session and open the regular meeting record.
All in favor?
I'd like to motion your adjournment.
Go for it.
I have scheduled my two slides.